Wow.
I'll celebrate.
Wow, it just tore off me. Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. And with that, we'll move on to item number three, which is public comments. Is there any public comments? Is there any public comments? Hearing no public comment. We'll move on to item number four, which is approved the minutes from the February 6, 2017 regular meeting. Do I have a motion to do so? Motion by Len, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Item number five, first selectman's report. Our town clerk, Sue DeBarbeau, will be officially retiring at the end of February. I want to take this time to personally thank Sue for her hard work and very dedicated service to the town of Seymour. Sue has done a fantastic job moving the clerk's office forward over the last few years. We're all going to miss her, and I wish her many years of healthy and happy retirement. I have appointed Leanna McMurray as the acting town clerk effective March 1 through July 1, 2018. In the coming weeks, we will start the process of permanently filling the vacancy, but I feel very confident that Leanna will be up to the task and will continue the high standard of service that the office is known for. Update on the fiscal year 2018 budget. The spending freeze is still in place. Hiring will be on an at-needed basis only. We have some retirements coming up in the next few months, and those positions will be replaced strategically. We're currently still looking at a projected budget shortfall of just under $200,000 due to the state cuts. The plan we put in place in mid-December is working as anticipated, and that number is slowly going down. The finance team feels strongly that we will finish the year with a balanced budget. With this in mind, I expect to be coming to this board with the capital plan for fiscal year 2018 at some point in the spring. While we may not spend the entire $300,000, I expect we will spend a large portion of it. At the same time, I will be presenting the capital plan for fiscal year 2019 for approval as they will work in conjunction with each other. And finally, budget deliberations are ongoing. Budgets are coming in, for the most part, as expected to the Board of Finance. I'll be presenting my budget, as well as an update on our current financials, at next Tuesday, February 27th, Board of Finance meeting at 7 o'clock in this room. The budget that I'll be presenting is expected to keep the mill rate level at 36 mills for a third year in a row, even with the loss of roughly $1.9 million in municipal funding from the state of Connecticut. That closes the first selectman's report. And we'll move on to item number six, discussion with the community services director. So, Mary, we're gonna ask you to talk into the microphone. If you need to move around, you can pull that off and go freestyle.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. A little bit late in doing this, but wanted to give you an update on what took place last year. So, this is a calendar year that I'm reporting on for numbers for 2017 for the Community Services Department. So, I'm gonna talk about our senior center and our recreation this evening and what's going on. If you turn to your first slide, we're gonna look at, the nice thing about this report tonight, different from last year, is we now have data to compare over two years. So, it's only gonna get better year after year where we could actually look at how we're doing and how we're growing. Total registrations, so keep in mind, once again, this takes into account the senior center and the recreation department. Our total registrations for this year for all programs and activities were 5,000, over 5,000 registrations. Across the board, our programs and activities have increased. I really attribute that to, in part, due to this, and I hope you guys all saw this. This is a flyer that went out in the fall. It went out to 6,000 households. To my knowledge, hopefully all of you received this, to my knowledge, this is the first time Seymour's ever done this. It cost us $3,000, but if you'll see on the back, it didn't cost us, we received sponsorship dollars. So, we're able to mail, and we're gonna do this mailing twice a year, we have another one coming up. We were able to mail this for free due to the sponsorships we received on the back. We brought in $6,000, a little over $6,000 in sponsorships. What our town, our local businesses received from this was the ad on the back page for two flyers. They received a banner in our gym. They received their name on the back of a basketball team to sponsor a basketball team. They received also email blast recognition, as well as Facebook and Twitter posts. So, I have to tell you, people jumped at it. My biggest problem is gonna be now that when we go to do the next one in a month, we have more people that wanna be in it and are willing to pay the price, and I've gotta find space. So, that's a good problem to have. So, we really see our increased, we think that our programs and our registrations have increased due to the increased communications that have happened due to this. We had a lot of people come in the door and say that they didn't even know what we were doing. So, we're slowly gaining momentum on bringing people in the door. If you flip to the next sheet, this is an interesting chart. I don't think it's gonna be any surprising at all to anyone. It's registrations by age. The majority of our registrations come in our senior population, and they come in our younger population. Really no surprise there. But what you'll notice is our registrations have increased significantly in those two groups. The one group we're really working on right now, and you'll see increases in, is that adult market. So, that 18 to kind of 50-year-old group where we're focusing on. We did a really good job of it this year. We had numerous men's basketball teams. We did a flag football league. We did line dancing classes. We did exercise classes. So, those numbers are slowly starting to go up, but we need to continue to focus on that one age group. If you turn the page one more time, this is by category, which I think will kinda show you where we're bringing in the majority of our activity. Our sports and fitness adults, this grew threefold, I mean by 56%. This was absolutely due to all of our new programs that I just mentioned, the basketball, the flag football, the line dancing, the exercise classes. Sports and fitness for our youth. The one thing that we're doing differently this year that we did not do last year is we're offering activities and programs, an increased number of them, at the schools. So, we have chess clubs going on at the school after school. We have Marcy's Tennis going on after school. And we've been able to do that because we can offer it at one location. We're using our community center bus, and we're transporting people from one location, so from Bungee, let's say, to Chatfield. And it's worked really well. The parents really like it. So, we've saved some dollars in doing it that way, and our numbers have increased. Day and overnight trips. We offered 25 day and overnight trips this year. Everything from Pacific Coastal Cruise to Boston to small theater trips. Huge, huge increase there, or a big increase there. Our biggest challenge with the day and overnight trips is we are now experiencing a waitlist with our community center bus. So, we're using our community center bus to transport. These are mostly seniors. We have a couple of bigger trips in there, like our Red Sox game, but we're using our community center bus to transport our seniors. We do this because that's the way that we can maintain the cost and keep it reasonable for our seniors. They love it. But because now the word is out and people are hearing about us, we've started to have some waitlists on those trips. The bus is getting older. We're gonna need a new bus. I think down the road, we need to look at getting a larger bus. I would not go crazy. Right now, we have an 18 passenger. I think that to go to a 26 or 28 passenger would be ideal, and we'd be able to handle what we have right now. So, that's one of our challenges in the coming months. We are tracking all those numbers of how many of the trips, I don't have it with me right now, but how many of the trips have waiting lists? And, you know, do we do those waiting lists? Some people do usually get in, some people don't, but we're tracking that all so that we have all of the numbers. Next is our senior lunches. We offer an in-house lunching every single month. We're averaging 55 people per in-house luncheon, which includes lunch and entertainment. They're really reasonably priced. We've been able to do that because we received a grant from the Matthews Foundation. They love it. So, in addition to those senior luncheons numbers, we're doing a lunch bunch, which this is not new. We've done it. It's a lunch bunch trip every single month where we transport our seniors in our community center bus to a local restaurant, and they love it. The market, we're really serving there so that you know it's a little bit of an older senior who they don't get to go out, they don't wanna drive to restaurants. We're providing that service for them, and they really enjoy it. We average on that typically 14 to 15 people per trip. The bus, once again, fits 18. Summer camps, if you look at our summer camp number, you're gonna see that that's the one place that stayed pretty much even. I attribute that to a couple of different things. We did raise our cost of our camp, and when I say raise slightly, it's still, we offered $200 for eight weeks of camp, which equates to $25 a week, 83 cents an hour. We're still really low priced on that. What we did was we lost about, by doing that, and who knows what the reason we lost it, but I will say we lost about 30 people. Did we really lose them? I don't think we really did, because I think what happens with that camp is it was so reasonably priced. When I first got here, it was $99 for eight weeks. It went to $150, and now it's $200. People were just paying the $99 of $150 because they could send their kids a day here, a day there, a week here, a week there. So, I don't think we're losing too much there. We also offered with that price many more, many more activities. We had in-house activities. We got a grant, and we brought in numerous educational, Audubon Society came in, a game show host came in. So, we were able to offer a lot more for that $200.
It's also a week longer.
It's also, it was also a week longer, exactly. It was eight weeks last year, yes. And I will say that we came very close to breaking even for the very first time. So, it was good, and I don't think, keep in mind, we turned no one away. I need to say that, we turned no one away. If anyone needs assistance, we have a financial aid form that they can go through. They can apply. We also received, I went after a Matthews grant. They gave us a $1,000 grant to subsidize some of the camp fees of people that needed it, as well as the town contributed to that as well. So, it was a dual match. But we don't turn anyone away. They fill out a form, we make sure there's a real need there, and then we do offer them camp. Health and wellness, educational seminars, those are typical. They did go up. We're offering more. There are AARP kind of seminars that we do, taxes. We do driving refresher courses. We do Medicare courses. That's the one area that I see that we can really grow. I think there's a little bit more of need of some educational workshops that can be done at a reasonable cost. So, we'll look at that, growing that even more this year. And then our swim lessons and aquatic fitness. I'm gonna talk about this on two slides, because you're gonna see that we went down on the next slide. We went slightly up on swim lessons, you'll notice. Keep in mind, that's slightly up, but we did not offer swim lessons last fall. We didn't do it for a number of reasons. Our staff was burned out. It's very hard to find staff, believe it or not, for lifeguarding and teaching swim lessons, as well as the availability of the pool was limited on when we could get it. So, we made a decision not to offer it. Our number went up slightly, but still not as much as we would've hoped. If you turn your sheet to the next page, this is by memberships. So, the others was programs and activities that you register for individually. This is memberships. Our senior membership has grown by 53%. Once again, I really believe it's due to this and word of mouth that we're now offering a lot more. Our building is busy, and the programs and activities are there for our seniors. We also, with the senior programs, we're now, you do need to have a senior membership to participate. We've never required that. So, when I say that, it's $5 for the year, and it's $7 for residents and $7 for non-residents. That allows us to offer the programs that reduce prices, offset our postage cost for our newsletter. Once again, if someone comes to me and they cannot afford it, we would absolutely waive that based on need. It's not a problem, and we haven't had anyone who has said that they can't do it. The average senior memberships are typically $10 to $15 per year, so we're still below the average on that one. Pool memberships, this is where I spoke a little bit earlier. We have gone down. It's due to the no swim lessons, we believe. We believe it's due to the access to the pool and the hours we're getting the pool. And the access to the pool relates to, we have to work around the swim team and their hours, as well as the Wildcat Club, their hours. Different organizations have the pool, as well as other things going on in the high school at that time, and for security reasons, us not being allowed in the pool. So, the first year, our number was up a little bit. People said, "Oh, let's try it," and then they looked at our hours. For instance, we offer swimming Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday nights, 7 to 9 o'clock. Some of those parents, they got little kids, they wanna go at 5:30, 6 o'clock, and they want their kids back home by 7:00. So, the 7 o'clock time slot's a little bit late. We're working around this to see how we can improve upon the pool numbers. There's definitely some room for improvement there. The fitness center. Fitness center, we only have numbers from last year because we just opened up the fitness center. 176 people right now are registered. I will tell you, I think the fitness center is the best kept secret in this town. It's free. It's two treadmills, a bike, a row machine, and all-in-one unit, and free weights for residents. I mean, it's there. People come, the people that come love it. This number that I'm showing you here of 176 is from last year. I just looked tonight, we just added another 25 people since January. So, word is getting out there. The one challenge with that as well is that it's only open during administrative office hours, so from 8 o'clock to 4:30. We've talked about staffing it, but I have to pay a staff person to be there. And right now, it's free, and we're in kind of a budget crunch, so I don't think that's where we're gonna, you know, right now, we're not able to spend our money there. But hopefully down the road, we will be able to offer that, or we'll be able to charge a little bit for the center too, and bring in some staffing. Transportation is the next chart. I don't know if I showed this last year. I think I just did some overall numbers. So, we went through and we compiled all the numbers. Shopping, which we do twice a week, that number stayed pretty steady. I think you all realize, we go shopping twice a week with our seniors. We pick 'em up at the house. We take 'em shopping to either a Stop &amp; Shop or ShopRite. It rotates on where we go. Great service, people love it, and it is needed. Our rec trips is the next number. If you guys take a look at the rec trip number, you'll see the increase. This is due to, last year, we made a decision of, our summer camp bus cost is extremely high. It costs, for instance, for me to bus campers from Bungee School over to the high school, which is, I don't know what, a mile, $300 per week. So, what we did was, we have a community center driver, we have a bus. We took smaller groups, in groups of 18, which worked really well for safety reasons as well, because we were moving smaller groups of kids to the pool at a time, and we used our community center driver. We saved over $2,000 in doing that to our summer playground program. So, that's why you're seeing that number there so high, as well as we used our community center bus for two middle school trips, our camps weeks, where they went to different locations three days a week. And we have the driver, we have the bus, so we're utilizing what we have. Senior center trips, I think that one's pretty self-explanatory. It's an increase due to our programs and activities. Bingo, the bingo is that if we have people that are home that cannot drive, bingo takes place on our shopping day, so we already have our driver. We pick up the resident at home, and we bring them to our building so that they can play bingo. Same thing with doctor's appointments. Not a big increase, but we try to schedule our doctor's appointments, although we'll do it at any time if we have a driver. We try to schedule them on the days that we have our driver in-house anyways, which is Tuesdays and Thursdays. Very little in doctor's appointments. We don't get a lot. Church services, we were transporting to, we've had to put a hold on that. We weren't serving a lot. We were serving four or five people. A couple of them got sick, and one unfortunately passed away. So, we were down to about one, and it just wasn't feasible on us continuing the service. We're compiling a list right now, so that if the need comes back, then we will offer it again. And the food bank is something we did new this year, where we received a couple of calls of people needed rides to the food bank. So, works out perfectly. Once again, it's scheduled with our driver, which is on a Tuesday when we have time. So, we just brought him in a half an hour earlier, and we're able to serve the food bank people. And then there's Founder's Day, where we do do some transportation for Founder's Day. The next sheet just shows kind of continued challenges. This really hasn't changed, and I don't know that, hopefully it will at some point, at least the communication one, but the facility upkeep, I know you guys are all aware of it. It's an older building. It has numerous issues. It's, the traffic in the building has increased immensely. So, as the traffic increases, there's more maintenance issues, which leads to increased expenses, increased custodial staff. We're on top of it. I know Kurt, Tony, everyone's on top of it, but it's something that we have to keep our eyes on with that building. Communication to residents, which I spoke about, it's always a challenge. We're gonna have to keep doing our flyers and our communications down the road when we have more money, or I can bring in more money on sponsorships. I'd love to see us do a townwide one of these, where it's not only our programs, but we talk about the town in general and things going on. Kurt and I have spoken about this in the past. I think it would be a great thing for Seymour to increase communications. And then staffing. We're doing better with staffing. We brought in Zach Filippas as our rec manager. He's doing a great job. Staffing is always gonna be a challenge as we grow and grow. As my program managers go out on the road, the phones are still ringing, the paperwork is still, things increase. So, staffing is always, the administrative workload continues to increase as we add programs and activities. Our next sheet is just a quick look at what's going on in 2018. Senior fit, senior strong. We went after a grant with the Valley Community Foundation. I asked for three days of free exercise classes for our seniors, because what we were finding was seniors were paying for exercise classes, one class here, one class there, and they were picking and choosing, because $10 a week, $15 a week gets to be much for a senior. Went after a grant, we received a grant for $2,500. We're now offering three, actually four, free exercise classes per week. Our numbers are great. I mean, we have, our Monday chair class has over 30 people registered. Our Wednesday Zumba Gold class has 20 people registered. We're offering a strength and toning class on Fridays that has 37 people registered. About 25 show up, so, you know, but I mean, but we've maintained, we've been doing it since February 1, and I don't think we've had a class under 15 people. So, there's a great need for our seniors to stay fit and to stay strong, and we're trying to fill that void at a reasonable cost for them. Bachi Court has been refurbished, or is in the process of being refurbished. We had an Eagle Scout that came in, built an awning. We have a bachi club that's been established. We have a group of women who are up and running and ready to go, once we're ready to go, once it's really prepared, which will be early spring. We are in conversations about a community garden with United Way that's going on, and then, of course, the continued focus of expanding the programs, as well as, we're looking at this year, we've talked about this in the past, kicking off a CIT program for our camp, so a counselor in training program, just to make you guys aware of it. It would be a way for us to give our teams, who don't have a place to go, an opportunity to become counselors in training. They would have to pay a small fee, is how it works. It's less than what the camp cost is, but it would set them up over a couple of year period, so that then, when they are of age, at age 16 or 17, when we bring them in, they have some experience, and they would be the first ones we would consider based on their experience from the program. It's done quite frequently in a lot of towns. So, we're looking at launching that this year as well. And I think that's about it right now, but I'll take questions. We have a lot more going on, but I know you guys are busy, so I wanted to kinda condense it really quick if I spoke too fast, but any questions?
Mary, I just wanna say, just to start with, you doubled your registrations from 16 to 17. I mean, that's great work by you and your staff. This is really impressive.
I have a great team. I have to say, they're phenomenal. They're really, everybody works together.
It shows. It's really impressive what you guys have done, what you've brought in, just a lot of different programs, the diversity, for young ages to adults to seniors. You got a lot of new offerings. It's really impressive. I think the CIT camp program is a great idea. You get kids, you train them, they see what it's like. They know the lay of the lamb when they become 16. Now, you give them a little money, right?
Exactly.
And it's just a, that's a great program. We get that up and running. It's impressive.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
The senior center, I was impressed with the numbers, and I had heard in the past, actually before you came on board, that a lot of our seniors were going to other towns. Are those numbers reflecting a recapturing of those seniors, or are they new people?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we cleaned the list when I first got in. So, I will be in Seymour three years in about a month or so. We cleaned the list when we first got here, which took some work. So, we cleaned the list, and people had gone away, and word is now getting out that we're doing more, you know, and it's becoming a place where people wanna come and stay, which is great. So, yes, I think that's definitely evident. The way we would prove that, I guess, is we'd have to look back at the old list and kinda compare them, but I'm confident to say, based on who's coming in my office, that it's, yes, it is people coming back. It's new people, though, too, I will tell you. It's old people that have chosen to come back because they see the new programs, and then there's new people who have said to me, some people, I had someone in my office last week saying, "I didn't even know you guys were here." Other people say, "I can't believe all you're doing now," you know? So, it's a mixture of people who just never did anything with us because there was nothing of interest.
Yeah.
You know? And then there's the old people that are coming back because they were not seeing what they wanted.
And kind of along those lines, you know, with regard to the adult population, you know, I fit in actually one of those age categories. You know, for me, one of the biggest impediments for me to join and do anything at all is I have two little kids. And so, obviously, their activities generally come before mine.
Right.
With regard to timing, because I'll just speak for my wife, for example. She'd probably love to participate in some kind of, you know, adult fitness class or something like that. With regard to timing of those types of classes for people with little kids, that there's something that the kids can do while the adults are, does that, I mean, do you guys do that now, or is that something you continue to?
We don't. Well, but it's funny, because we've been talking about that. The one thing I would've loved to have done, I don't know how young your kids are, but this was a good example of, we talked about doing it. We have that fitness center. We have these parents that are down in the gym, like right now, my gym is, that gym is filled right now. It's games, so they're not gonna leave for the games, but they will leave for the practice. So, if they could even just come up and do the fitness center, if I had staffing there, that would be awesome. Or what we're doing, starting tomorrow night, and this will roll into the fall, we're offering a Pilates and yoga class. So, it's a Pio class. So, if we can tie that to the basketball season, or if we have a jump bunch class, if we can tie that to our jump bunch class, which we just launched, I think you're right. It would be a great idea.
That would be, I could say for, you know, absolutely, somebody like myself or my wife would be ecstatic, because then it gives you something to do, you know? And the kids are obviously taken care of, too.
Right, right, right. That's a great idea.
Well?
Just one last comment. Mary, your idea with charging a nominal fee for that fitness room to allow staffing, you probably could take a quick survey and see what people think, but come up with a number that works. I mean, even $25 a year would be a steal.
Yeah.
And you could staff it.
The reason we didn't do it in the past, when we initially launched, was because we don't have that much equipment in there. We're gaining more equipment. So, you know, it's recently, I have to say, and this is just for the morning crowd, I've gone in there one or two times now. I've only gone in, I'd say, twice where someone was waiting. But I've gone in where we do now have like all four machines, we only have four machines, you know, or five machines, where they're full. So, I think you're right, if we price it right, or if we get more equipment, we can definitely look at that.
Maybe you offer a class or two or something.
Yeah.
Like Glenn is saying, you offer classes, and you could charge for the classes, to Like Glenn is saying, you offer classes and you could charge for the classes to pay for the instructor. There's a lot of different things you can do.
Yeah, good idea.
Sure you've thought of them already.
Not everything. Most of our ideas actually come from our residents and people like you, honestly. It's people coming through our doors, it's people talking to us, and us just giving it a shot to see how it goes. I mean, we've done things that have worked and we've done things that have failed, but we throw it at the fan, and if it sticks, that's great, and if it doesn't, then, you know, we move on. All our programs, I will say ninety percent of our programs are priced to break even. So everything we do, you know, leaving alone our salaries, though I know our salaries are not, because I know what Kurt was gonna say to me. So, but we price our programs, we price our programs to break even, you know, and, just so everybody knows.
Well, I, for one, am very happy that this is going to folks and to see it grow. I'm so happy that you are here at Seymour.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm very happy that you are getting all of our communities, young, middle, and middle age, involved in this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I do not look at one, I look at you.
I said Al.
I look at Kurt. No, never.
Good.
I think it's a very impressive report, I really do. Obviously, you did a lot of work putting this together, and it's very impressive. I just, I have two comments. One, I think it's a shame, and I understand the budget constraints, I understand completely, but for your registration by age to have the number of people that you have, for example, who might be interested in the trips, ages fifty-five to seventy-nine, you have almost twenty-five hundred people and you have an eighteen-person bus, and I just really think that should probably become a town priority, to have more transportation available. I'm not affected yet by it, but I'm sure at some point, you know, it gets to be a daunting task to drive. And to have that available as a service, I think would be wonderful.
I agree.
So I'd really like to see us stress, you know, getting more transportation. And the other thing is, a couple of years ago, we received a letter from a little girl who I think was ten or twelve years old, from the Chatfield District, asking us about a community garden. And we didn't act on it. Do you recall it?
I do, yeah.
And I saved the letter.
I still have the letter, I think.
Yeah, I do too, it's on my desk. And I think it's a fabulous idea. They have one down in Milford, which I passed when I posted out, and if we could do that, I mean, do you have a location in mind?
You want to talk to that, or do you want me to?
You go ahead.
That's in conjunction with the United Way.
Yes, I-
Honestly, that's really who that's in conjunction. We're looking at locations around the community center right now. So it's gonna be located at the community center, and we're trying to pinpoint where right now.
And the initial garden itself is gonna be for the food bank. So it's not gonna be a community garden per se, where people can come and plant things?
Yes, I understand that.
Right, so it'll be for that, at least to get it started, and then hopefully it will grow into-
Could grow, it could grow. I think it's a fabulous idea.
Yeah.
Congratulations, I think this is fabulous.
I'll just say, I'm very happy to finally see some year-over-year data. Obviously, the data is great, so I appreciate you putting this together, and I just encourage you to continue looking at ways to get those eighteen to fifty-four numbers up, but this is obviously a nice improvement. Thank you.
Yeah, they're growing, it's taking us a little time. It's the same challenge we talked about last year.
Yeah.
Twitter's working, it is working. Zach's great at it.
Yeah.
So Twitter's working, we're reaching them, but it's a hard market. And they, a lot of times, they don't want to register, it's just, it's a challenge. But we'll get them, we're slowly getting them. The flag football, the basketball, the line dancing, you know, the zumba dance during the, at nighttime, we're doing a paio class, we're slowly starting to get-
The dodgeball tournament?
The dodgeball tournament was great, yeah.
That was in November.
I'd love to see all of you guys as a team next year.
Oh, dear God.
That would be awesome. Just kidding, just kidding.
We would need extra insurance.
As long as Zach's team doesn't show up. Got nine baseball pitchers throwing balls at a hundred and fifty miles an hour, it's not good. You know, I think that, you know, Karen, you brought up the point, I think the two biggest issues that we're gonna have to deal with, number one is the bus, and number two is space, because this is growing much faster, I think, than we had hoped for, than we had anticipated. We're starting to run out of space. So we're in conversations now about moving the offices around, knocking down walls, doing different things, just trying to come up with more program space, so. But that's a good problem to have. I'd rather have a building that is overused and, you know, we don't have places to put people, as opposed to an empty building that just sat there unused, and I think that was all of our concerns probably four years ago at this point, so.
We do have nights to that point. We do have nights, last week in particular, where we had two classes going on, we had to reschedule a class, and we had nowhere to put people. You know, it was like, it's, once again, it's a great problem to have, but we might have to rework the floor layout. There's a lot of room there, but it's the way the space is laid out.
Have we ever considered, down the road, long-term planning for expansion or something?
It's something we've been looking at, but the issue with that building is, it's in the floodplain, yeah. So, you know, my vision, and I know this is very pie in the sky, was to build a brand-new building in the field area, kind of around the skate park, knock the current building down, put up a pool with one of those retractable domes, and parking all around it. Of course, that's millions and millions of dollars, but we can build it to suit with two gyms and things like that. It's own swimming pool, we could really crank programming up at that point, but that's easier said than done.
It's our dream.
Yeah. So. All right, anything else? No? Excellent, Mary, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, item number seven. All right, discussion and take possible action regarding Seymour Fire Department tax abatements. In your packets, you have the abatement list for 2017. It is broken down into Citizens Engine Company and Great Hill Hose Company. This was reviewed by the chiefs, as well as approved by the fire commissioners at their most recent meetings. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Seymour Fire Department tax abatement report for Citizens Engine Company and Great Hill Hose Company as presented. Motion by Len, second by Trish. Is there any discussion? Hmm? You don't have an issue? You don't, yeah. Anything else? Any questions, comments? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes, I, motion passes six, zero. Okay, item number eight, discussion, take possible action regarding Seymour Ambulance Association tax abatements. Again, in front of you, you have a report from the executive director of Seymour Ambulance, Kyle Kelly, and this is the abatement recipients for 2017. Now, notice, there is some color coding. Red is for abatements being applied to homes, black is abatements being applied to vehicles. Yes, with that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Seymour Ambulance tax abatement recipients for 2017, as presented by executive director Kyle Kelly. Motion by Len, second by Al. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, how many are some of these? There's two names for two hundred percent abatement.
Father's name is similar, and there has been some confusion in the past, so it's father and son.
Is there a second or third one down here?
Cindy...
Is it how it's spelled? I just want to make sure.
I didn't notice that one.
They're both listed in black.
I mean, the two Peters, that's father and son, so we've had that issue before, and that's noted in there.
Yes, that is.
The Cindy, the Cindy Pampa, it should only be one. So Rich, how should we handle that? I don't see why she'd be entitled to two.
What can she use, too, or not?
Well, that's my question.
Yeah.
Is that, because she's using a private vehicle, is that, I mean, it's a-
You might want to look into it.
Uh, could be.
It costs the points to look for a house or something.
Could be. But I'd, uh-
Can we go and look at that?
Yeah, you know what? Let's just table.
Act on the rest of it, act on the other.
Yeah. Good call.
And the reference to the house, the side main, and put it on the left to down there.
Okay, so Len and Al.
I would amend my motion to reflect-
No, no, good catch.
The removal of the second and third lines from the list, pending future engagement.
Oh, you made the second.
Yes, second.
Okay. All right, so just under discussion room, if you can reach out to Kyle tomorrow, and just find out. All right, so again, just for clarification, lines two and three are gonna be removed from the list for this vote, and then we'll take those back up at our first meeting in March, after a little further discussion. Any other comments or thoughts? Mary's good? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes, I, motion passes, oh, actually, seven, zero. And Lena, now that I realize, did you mark when, Amory? Okay. Perfect, thank you. Okay. All right, item number nine, executives, well, actually, I'm gonna make a motion to go out of order and skip item number nine and move on to item number ten. Motion by Len, second by Trish. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes, I, motion passes six, zero. Next item, item number ten, appointments. We have four appointments this evening. You see them listed here tonight, or on the sheet in front of you, excuse me. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments of February twentieth, 2018, as presented by the Board of Selectmen. First selectman, excuse me. Motion by Len, second by Karen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes, I, motion passes seven, zero. Item number eleven, tax refunds and abatements. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to accept the tax collector's report dated February sixth, 2017. Motion by Len.
Second.
Second by Trish. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes, I, motion passes seven, zero. Item number twelve is transfers. We have no transfers before us this evening. Item number thirteen is correspondence. We have our check registers. We have correspondence from resident Joseph Luciano that he would like entered in as public comment and public correspondence. So you can see that attached, this will be attached to the minutes of the meeting, so that way there is a record of his comments. We have an email from Bonnie Wilks, who is resigning from the Livable Communities Committee. We have a letter from Kimberly Osgood, and she's submitting her resignation as a commission member for the Seymour Culture and Arts. And then, also, you have the official form that I filled out for the state of Connecticut, appointing Leanna McMurray as the acting town clerk, and you can see the dates, March first, 2018, through July first, 2018. So the new town clerk, whomever that person would be, would take over on July second of 2018. So that's just more of a procedural thing that we have to do for the state of Connecticut. So, okay. So with that, we'll move on to item number fourteen, public comments. Is there any public comments? Is there any public comments? Hearing, no public comment. We'll move on to item number fifteen, selectmen's public comment, and I wanted to go out of order, so we can let Leanna go home. So, Stefan?
I'm all set tonight, thank you.
Karen?
I'm all set, too.
Len?
Yeah, I just want to commend Public Works with, once again, doing a heck of a job with the most recent snowstorm. They just keep knocking it out of the park, as far as I'm concerned, so I just want to give them a quick public kudos for that.
You know, if I could just add, and, you know, this is a credit to our two members as well that are on the board, you know, we started the working together for operations with the Board of Education and the town. If anybody's driven by the middle school recently, that is Public Works deciding that they didn't like the way the front of the school looked, so they're gonna clean it all up. So they've cut down trees, trimmed trees, dropped dirt, taken out rocks, weeded. I mean, it's only halfway done, but you can notice a huge difference.
Huge difference, huge difference.
You know, kudos to Public Works, you know, and credit to the Board of Education as well, Joe Falzone, our new facilities director, him and Tony DiPrimo were working hand-in-hand, which is very nice. A lot of things are getting done, a lot more effectively, a lot more efficiently, so it's a home run, top of this. Al?
I just wanted to thank Mary McNellis for coming in again, Community Services, she's doing a great job, and like Glenn said, just echo his comments, Public Works did another great job with the recent snow event, just seamless, and it was not easygoing Saturday night, as we know, so.
No.
They did a good job around our town, it was well-prepared.
Bruno had a little, some driving issues on Saturday night, but we saved them. So, Amory?